Good evening. Today is March 19th, 2018. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. Welcome. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We have just convened from executive session and we will be returning back into executive session at the end of this meeting, so we have not closed that. We have not adjourned executive session. And we have a few presentations this evening, so I welcome everyone who's come and those who are watching from home. We have a lot of important business to discuss tonight. I think we're gonna skip the comments from the Board tonight unless there's any Board members who have something that they wanted to add or had prepared to speak about, and just go straight to the comments from the superintendent and go into... Rob, did you want to add something?
Yeah, just one thing quick. I know we kinda, we won't have another meeting until the bond. We have a lot going on with the budget, school safety and all the other things. But I just wanna, I just recognize the girls and the boys who were involved in the JazzCo dance routine I attended last weekend. I just, for those who aren't aware of it, I think that's a fabulous program. The girls put in a ton of time practicing and preparing for that. They're at it for four or five months almost every night. And just to recognize them for a great job they do. Denise and Karen do a fantastic job putting it together. And just to recognize them and it doesn't get overlooked because it got delayed with the weather and all the incidents we had. So congratulations to the girls and good job by all.
Thank you.
Actually, I did want to say one thing too, because the play is coming up this week. And I know they've been, the same thing, practicing really hard. So if you can make it out there, Thursday, Friday or Saturday, make sure you, you know, you attend. It's the middle school, high school. So every year, I know it's a great performance. So if you're around...
7:30, right?
7:30, yep.
Okay. Anything else?
That's fine.
Okay, thanks.
I had a couple of chatter boys, but I think the nature of the time was given.
Okay.
Okay. Just some opening remarks. Good evening to everyone. Thank you for joining us. Reminder, and an important reminder, that on April 10th, the district has a bond referendum vote. And we are asking the public to cast their vote on whether or not they would like to see us move forward with a nearly $10 million bond referendum project. Most of you know it includes eight new classrooms at Cottle. That would be a second story addition to the elementary school building. It includes security upgrades at the elementary school and throughout the district, and quite a bit of infrastructure repair. Our communication systems internally, where we can make announcements and sometimes emergency announcements, those systems are very, very dated. They're more than 30 years old, need upgrades. Our fire alarm system is in need of upgrades. And then also the two fields out at the middle high school, we have a synthetic turf field. It is nearing end of life, so this bond will allow us to replace that field. And then also at the Cottle Elementary School, most people who are familiar with that field would agree that it is in desperate need of repair. And this bond proposal also has money allocated to completely renovate correct drainage problems and repair the Cottle playfield that hundreds of kids play on every day. You may have already received your bond newsletter, so not to have the same problem we had back in December, we got that out to the public very early. The post office is a bit unreliable, as we learned back in December. So our concern is, is it too early? So however, better early than late. And we have other communication that will follow. So in that newsletter, it does offer two opportunities for the community to tour our schools and see exactly where we plan to do renovations or construction. The first one is on Tuesday, the 27th, at 7:00 PM, okay? And it'll be a tour of all the sites being designated for renovation, as well as a brief presentation. We will not keep you long. And then there is one during the day. So people that could not make the evening session, we decided to schedule on Wednesday, 28th, at 9 o'clock. That one you need to call Ms. Lauren Trul in my office and schedule, because as you understand, the school is in session and we don't want to be disruptive. And we have a number of people signed up, and if need be, we will create multiple groups, so we don't try to walk through the elementary school with an entourage of 30 or 40 people and be disruptive. So I encourage you, if you're not familiar with it and if you want to understand more, the tours last time around, I think were very effective, and it really helped people to understand what we would like to accomplish. Also, the Board last week decided to move forward with a public relations service. It is a part-time service that will enable us to communicate more effectively with you. What we realized is, you know, social media is probably the most important means of communication in this day and age, and we need to do a better job there. There are incredible stories about our students, about our faculty, accomplishments in our schools that do get out there, but not effectively enough. And therefore, we are going to have a Facebook page that will be launched very soon. The PTA was managing it for some time, but they are going to turn it over back to the district, I believe. And one of the first things we will be communicating about are bond updates, but then also many, many stories about the students of Tuckahoe and the great staff of Tuckahoe. So hopefully, you will look forward to that, and we will enjoy putting those stories together and getting them out to the public so they can understand all the great things that are happening here. Now, at this point, we have a consultant with us who is a leading expert in the field of school safety. His name is Mr. John Laplaca. His company is Altaris. And they consult for districts, I think throughout the tri-state area, if I'm not mistaken, John, but locally, to name a few, Scarsdale, White Plains School District. And in my superintendent's group, he, John is held in very high esteem for the work and the consultation that he's provided. So we have brought him on board. He's done professional development and staff trainings with us before. And Ms. Lou and Mr. Cuglietto have worked with John in their previous districts. And also, he has, without compensation, been informally giving us wonderful advice over the past year, and I appreciate that, John. But we're entering into a more formal agreement with him, so he can do a full evaluation of all the safety in our school district. And he's here just to tell you about his service. He will not get into the details of what exists and ideas that he already has for us that he will recommend. And those will not be made public. They will be shared, of course, with the Board and the administrative team and the staff as needed. But a lot of the things that John recommends, please understand, will never be announced publicly. But he is here to talk about how he will be serving the district. And John, I welcome you and invite you up to the podium.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks so much for having me. Again, John Laplaca. A little bit about the firm, and then I'll kind of go over a brief overview of how our service works. I am a former law enforcement administrator. Altaris has been around since 2008. We are currently working with about 150 schools. We are based in Westchester County, so the body of our work is in the Westchester area. The majority is in New York State, although we do have a national footprint as well, as far south as Louisiana. I'm actually flying down there in the morning to a school down there. So, but we are experts of our backyard here in the New York area. What's important to note is that, obviously, when events like a Parkland occur, there is a, are a big push towards firms like ours to, you know, come into districts to help them. And one of the things I think it's important to note is that Tuckahoe has been involved with our firm well before a Parkland. So not only are they discussing the fact that safety and security is a top priority, but they've already been on the process as far as working with us, consulting with us, providing staff development. And that's important to note, because many districts right now are scrambling to bring on services in response to something that probably should have never occurred in our society, but it has. So what our process is, is to, we want to prevent whenever possible, and when you can't prevent it from happening, because certain things are just simply not preventable, is to respond effectively, to respond effectively to any emergency that your district might encounter. So what I wanted to do is just to provide a brief overview of what our service looks like and what is going to occur as we move forward with the district. The first step in the process is the assessment process. And this is, this is something that some districts shy away from, because anytime you're asked to take a critical look in the mirror to determine, you know, where the gaps and loopholes are, where potentially your vulnerabilities are, it's a tough thing to do. But this should be perceived as a very positive process. It's not a white glove approach. It's designed to identify those critical hazards that may exist, where the planning gaps might be. And we probably reinforce half of the, more than half of the things that you're doing correctly, as we do those things that you may want to improve upon. And we call those improvement opportunities. And that's important, because knowing what you're doing correctly is as important as things that you should be doing. And what happens is that, when you're operating a district, sometimes it can get a little bit like a vacuum, that you think that this is the way we do it. And when we bring our expertise, not only from best practices, but also what's working in other districts, it can be very helpful. So we're looking at things like your emergency plans, facilities, your community, what the resources that are available. Community to community, things vary tremendously. I was just speaking with the lieutenant. And, you know, having a local police department is an enormous step in the right direction. Some communities simply don't have that presence. When you have an agency like a state police or a county police, you don't have that personal feel that you have with a local police department that is vested in the community, vested in your schools, and actively involved. So that's critical. And we're gonna collaborate, you know, very closely with your police department in the process. Once we've complete that assessment, we put together what's called an improvement opportunities report, which will be shared with the Board. We will review that and make sure that all the things that are on that report that the district buys into. There's probably about 5% in that report that community to community, districts evaluate those items and say, what may or may not be right for your community. We work with city school districts, affluent school districts, districts someplace in the middle, and not everything is right for every district. And again, we want to make sure that whatever we implement here is correct for your stakeholders in the community. Once we go through that process, we prioritize the list to determine, because again, when you come up with that list, you have to kind of prioritize, what's the low hanging fruit? And many of the things that we identify have no cost at all associated with them. And sometimes those are the best return on investment. I will tell you that one of the knee-jerk reactions is, in the wake of these critical incidents, is, is to move towards technology. So cameras, metal detectors, bulletproof glass, all these things, which are, in many cases, unproven best practices. They simply don't work, and they're easily overcome. And again, you can focus a lot on the low hanging fruit that will really have a tremendous return on your investment. So things like training, policies and procedures, the way you do things, are gonna give you a tremendous return on investment. Cameras are a big one that people bring up all the time, too. And while cameras are a fantastic investigative tool, and as a principle, they're a tremendous resource to determine who started the fight, who etched something on a wall, that there's not many people that are watching all of these cameras to actually prevent things from happening in the first place. So you have to be very careful, because you can spend an awful lot of money on technology and not really get that return on investment. And while technology goes a long way to support an emergency management program, technology does not respond to emergencies. People do. And that's a critical component. We're gonna be spending a lot of time with the people component. Once we implement those, we prioritize that list, we're gonna be working with the district. So if there's any vendors that are gonna be involved in doing improvement opportunities, we'll collaborate with them and oversee that process to make sure that's, everything's getting done. Unlike many consulting firms, we are very, very hands-on. So we don't come into the district, provide lectures, a punch list, walk away, come back a year later, because typically what happens is that, you know, the ball doesn't get moved down the court very far when you have that. So we're very hands-on. We do most of the heavy lifting for the district and collaborate with the administrators in the district to make sure that when I'm standing here a year from now, the district's condition has improved dramatically from this point on. And that's critical, because again, as much as everyone in this room places safety and security as a top priority, you simply don't have the time and the expertise to manage this critical function. And obviously, when, when your parents send their kids to school, there's an expectation that they're safe, and you want them to be as safe as possible. So it's our responsibility to work with the district to make sure that all the best practices are in place, and we've developed the capabilities of everyone, from the cafeteria worker all the way up to the superintendent, to be able to prevent emergencies when possible and respond effectively when necessary. Okay? So that's the assessment process. And then we move towards the emergency management program. This will be a, an annual program that we're gonna be working on. So for the next 12 months, we're gonna be working through this program. The beginning of the program starts with planning. So currently, right now, your district has what's called a district safety plan, which is the document that is on your website, that is open for public inspection. Then each building is required to have a building level emergency plan. This is, has all the confidential safety and security protocols that are confidential documents. These are not open for public inspection. They're not susceptible to foils. And these are, this is what's kept on there. And it's important that when we have these discussions about safety and security, there are many things, as your superintendent indicated, that we simply can't talk about. And the reason being, it's not that we're trying to hide anything from the public. The issue becomes that we want to make sure that someone out there who is attempting to harm your district, and hopefully there is no one trying to do that, doesn't have that information to determine where the vulnerabilities or the soft spots might be. So that's why these documents and these plans are kept confidential. And we talk in generalities when we talk about safety and security in these forums as well. So the next process is that we move into staff development. The staff development process is specific to the roles of people in your district. So general staff is required to get emergency response training by September 15th of each year and within 30 days of hire. That includes substitute teachers. So we do not want to leave anyone in your district without that training, because again, we've seen that in lessons learned in the past, that substitute teachers and people who do not receive training were contributing factors to some of the carnage and some of these horrific incidents that we've seen. So we want to make sure that everyone is effectively trained in emergency response procedures and prevention as well. We spend a lot of times with the building emergency response teams. So these are the teams at each building that are charged with emergency management in their buildings. They are the point people. They are the people that will manage emergencies if there was one in their buildings, and they will collaborate with your district team as well. So we'll be spending a full day session with them and then returning with them to do tabletop exercises. And we'll also collaborate with law enforcement to be involved in that process as well. Because again, these are the people that are gonna be responding to your buildings in an emergency. They should be involved in the process as well. And then, of course, the district team, which is going to come at, you know, an event from a very different perspective, dealing with parent reunification, media relations, parent relations. So we work closely with the team as well, so that they understand what their role is in emergency as well. Emergency planning steps. So after the teams actually get that foundational training, we go into the planning mode, where we're gonna be working one-on-one with the principals. Each building has about 125 planning steps that we go through, and then another 50 steps district-wide. A typical school that we start with has about 30 to 40 of those steps complete right now. And then the other steps, we've worked with them to complete the process to make sure that everything gets done. All of this emergency planning occurs in a cloud-based portal, so that everyone had, knows what their assigned accountabilities are. Communications are kept under one roof. There's complete transparency, so your superintendent and other officials at the district level can see what the progress is. And we want to make, again, make sure that we move that ball down the court to make sure that we're actually making real progress across the platform. And then finally, we're returning to the district later on in the year to do those tabletop exercises. And during the course of the year, the district will be collaborating with us 24/7, 365, has unlimited access to us for any emergency management, safety and security issue that might arise. That is one of the biggest pieces of our intervention. I am frequently on the phone in meetings, email communications, with superintendents, with principals, on a variety of issues ranging from simple things that might have occurred in the school building or to something major that might have occurred. And we stand shoulder to shoulder with you during that process. You're at unlimited access to us. We work like administrators do, you know, 24/7. It's not uncommon for us to be talking on a Sunday morning, on a Saturday night. So you have unlimited access to us for those purposes. And certainly, if there was ever an incident to occur, knock on wood, we would be there to help assist with that incident onsite. There is never a meter running with our service. You know at the outset what the investment is of the district. So we don't ever want to have a situation where a district has to make a decision about making a phone call, that there might be a bill associated with that. So you know at the outset that you have access to us. So that's what the program looks like. It's very comprehensive. Again, we spend a lot of times with the, with the district during the course of the year. And hopefully, like I said, when we're standing here next year to give you an update, you're in a much better place than you are right now. Have a question?
If any of our Board members have any questions for John?
John, you mentioned that the physical stuff isn't always the most bang for the buck. I agree with that. You talked about a lot of the emphasis on training. Does your firm get into any type of recommendations for us with regards to preventative interaction with the children and trying to identify threats and/or trouble children and trying to interact early? Do you guys get involved in any of that as well?
So that's a great question. So we're not mental health professionals. We don't sell ourselves to be such. But our training component actually has a large portion that deals with that prevention component. So that mental health component, identifying warning signs, how to effectively interact with the kids, how to identify students that might be in need, suffering from bullying, isolation, those types of things. And we don't limit it to just students, because again, we're focused on anyone that's in your building. So that could be employees of the district, because we certainly can't know what's going on in the lives of all our employees at any given time. You know, for all the things that we do to harden our perimeters of our building, to keep people out, in many cases, the threat is lawfully in the building. And we need to be able to effectively identify those types of things. And then, again, if we can't prevent it from happening or getting into our buildings, we want to be able to respond effectively to it. And we certainly don't want you to pigeonhole the worst of the worst, which would be, you know, the active shooter events that, you know, certainly right now, it's top of mind because of what's going on in the world. You are far more likely to deal with a host of other hazards in your buildings, non-custodial parent issues, infrastructure failures, weather-related issues, than you are to deal with that active shooter type of issue. You have to be prepared for everything. So we take an all-hazards approach, to look at all of those things, to make sure that you're ready and able to respond to them. But we do cover that piece pretty extensively in the programs. And we want you to effectively collaborate with both your internal people that you have on staff right now, and also the external resources that are available to you regionally, as far as mental health goes.
Right. Thank you.
John, some, some of our community members have raised some concern over morning drop-off procedures, you know, cars when a residential neighborhood, and presents a bit of a challenge getting in and out. Will you take a look at, at that piece as well?
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things that we do when we do the assessment process, we're looking at arrival dismissal, how the flow of traffic is, how school buses interact, how walkers interact, how do, you know, parent drop-offs interact. Because again, you know, statistically, you're much more likely to encounter an issue where a child is injured from a pedestrian accident or a bus accident than anything else that you're faced with. So, you know, we have to look at that and not just the worrying about the active shooter component that, you know, comes into play all the time. So arrival dismissal, your buildings are definitely look different during those times, as well as after school, is another component that we look at as well. Because again, your schools are open to the community, to utilize them as resources. So we have to look at those, you know, particular things, because those, you know, you know, potentially are vulnerabilities as well. So we're looking at it from the time that, you know, you open your door to the time you close your doors late at night.
My, my other question, actually, thank you. I think you really covered well many of the things that we're concerned about. I also did appreciate the emphasis on the training. That was something that I was really happy to hear. My question is more like the timeline. So when, how quickly? You come in, you start doing an assessment, and then when do we hear from you?
So typically, what happens is that within the first 30 days of the district's intent to move forward, we'll schedule the site assessments to come out to your district to look at the buildings. Fortunately, because of the size of your district, it enables us a little bit more flexibility to get in sooner than later. We have some very large districts that it's, you know, logistically, it's, it's difficult for us to get them scheduled as quickly as yours. Usually, after we complete that process, usually within about two weeks, we provide the improvement opportunities report, which is the comprehensive report that'll show all the things from, you know, policies, procedures, training, infrastructure, all those things that we look at. It's a very comprehensive report for review. And then obviously, we'll be available for a follow-up meeting with the Board in executive session, typically, to review those things, have any questions. And that'll be then our launching pad moving forward with scheduling the training at each of the buildings to get rolling. Depending on what the timeline is, as far as where we're at, at that point, we'll have to make a determination at the district level to determine whether we want to start the training then, or we want to push the training to the, to fall. Because again, we don't want to push it too, you know, towards the end of the year, because we want to keep it top of mind. I would say, based on where we are right now, that you're probably gonna want to have the training, you know, before the end of the year, as opposed to pushing it to the fall. Because I think there's still plenty of time.
Great. That's good to hear. The other question I had was, you mentioned emergency response teams in the building, and that they would meet with our larger committee. We have on our agenda tonight to set up a committee. Do you give the structure for those committees, like what the recommendations would be, what their mission should be, what it is that they're trying to accomplish?
Absolutely. So one of the planning steps is the actual, making sure that we structure the teams that you need. So, you know, just to give you an overview, there's, you have to have a district-wide safety team, which is comprised of members of the community and members of the school district. That's a state requirement to have that team. They are responsible for approving the district's safety plan. Each building needs to have a building safety committee, which is building personnel plus external members as well. So that could be law enforcement, fire department, parents on that team. Has to have a building emergency response team, which is typically just internal members of the team, so a cross-section of your staff. They also have to have a post-incident team. So that's more of a mental health-type team that, you know, should there be an event, those are the people that are gonna, you know, be put into action. A school district your size simply doesn't have the resources to have a, a team at each, you know, each of the two buildings. So it'd be a one combined team that'll have that, and could even have people from outside, from like BOCs, that would be involved in that team. They have to have that as well. And then there's optional teams, like a threat assessment team that would be put into play, that if someone is identified as a potential threat, these people would actually evaluate in a structured, systematic process to go through to determine, you know, is this threat something that we need to involve law enforcement with? So it's a multidisciplinary team where law enforcement can actually sit on that team as well.
So most importantly, is you're gonna give us the foundation for that entire setup?
Absolutely. We're gonna guide the entire process as related to safety, security and emergency preparedness. That's, you know, that's essentially what our intervention is.
So you're actually gonna be involved also with us in the threat assessment of threats that we identify as well?
So typically, what happens is that if a, if a building identifies a threat, and they go through that process, the majority of those issues are going to be handled internally and will probably never even reach the status where they would need to get the police department involved. If in fact, something comes to the attention of the team or the building, and they simply say, you know, listen, but we're not really sure where to go with this, that's one of those, let's pick up the phone and make a phone call, speak with Altaris, speak with our local law enforcement to make sure that in fact, you know, we're approaching this. It's always better to be safe than sorry. And by going through the same process every single time, you make sure that you've hit upon all the key elements on there. So there's a structured checklist that has been developed nationally that the building should go through and to identify whether or not this is somebody that we need to escalate, this person, you know, as far as who is gonna be involved in this process. But we're accessible for any of these items, you know, that come up.
John, thank you. I think this was, this was very informative. I think it's something, obviously, the Board, we definitely want to move forward with you, and we'll talk more about the details of it. But you mentioned at the very beginning that there already has been some sort of relationship with the school, with staff development, and some training. Can you, can you maybe just give us what has been done already to date with, with your company?
Sure. So I forgot what month it is, this kind of, when, when we did that training.
November.
November, okay. Wow.
So annually?
So what we did in November is that the district brought us in to do a all-staff development day, where we were in the auditorium, and we actually did an overview of emergency response procedures. I believe it was a couple hours that we did that kind of covers, you know, broadly what the interventions are, what the emergency protocols are. So that was our first step with the district. And then we've been communicating with the district, you know, kind of on an informal basis, on, you know, our potential for moving forward and, you know, guiding. I have a relationship with Mr. Cuglietto, who was formerly with BOCs. So, you know, Lou and I have, you know, have a good relationship, and we're going back and forth, and we've spoken on several occasions.
What hasn't happened yet, Rob, and I want to just recognize, Lieutenant Jeff Hunter from Eastchester PD is here with us. Jeff and I have a very good working relationship, a very strong working relationship for the past nearly 15 years that we've both been in our positions, me in the school, Jeff at the PD. And he is in here regularly. Rookie police officers, escorting them around the building, making sure they're familiar with our needs. Every lockdown drill is performed with the police department. Now that, my understanding is that's not a requirement?
No. And again, that is, that is the exact, to your point, where the difference between having a police department that is invested in your schools, as opposed to a police department that simply is there to respond to calls for service, where, you know, the first time that they enter the building might be in an emergency. And that is not a good situation. The fact that your police department makes it a priority to make sure that their, your people are familiar with that building, in the middle of a critical incident, that's not the first time you want to be seeing their faces. So that is the difference between, you know, a local police department and a community that has said, listen, we're not going to pay for a police department here. We're gonna just have a state agency come in here. Not a knock on state police, but they simply don't have the resources. They simply don't have the resources. It's a totally different animal.
So our drills, you know, it's mutually beneficial.
Absolutely.
Jeff and I talk about this all the time, how, you know, the police officers become familiar with our building, familiar with our staff, our students, and of course, we get valuable feedback. Now, what hasn't happened yet, this is the first time- Now what hasn't happened yet, this is the first time we're connecting our police department with our consulting firm, and I look forward to the work ahead. You know, as Michelle said, tonight, we will be establishing a formal committee. This group of individuals and local leaders has met regularly and has had a close working relationship. But we're going to formalize this process a bit more, get John involved, and I think the results will be strong.
Yeah, I'll just make a comment on that. I was fortunate enough to sit in on a meeting, that call invited me to, with Lieutenant Hunter and Chief Bonzi, all the administrators. And the thing I was most impressed with was the very clear communication flow that takes place between our district and the police department. That was one of the things that I was keen in on. I wanted to hear that that was happening and I got a good feel that that was happening because I'm a firm believer that that's really where most of the meat is, is where, is connecting those dots and seeing that what's happening as in a broad picture versus just trying to prevent something from happening day of. So the fact that, I just want to just relay that to the rest of the community, that I got to see that and hear that communication flow and it's good. It's a really good relationship, it's clear to me that it is, between our local PDs and our district. So just wanted to pass that on.
It's the difference between being proactive and reactive. So a proactive department like Eastchester that's invested, involved with the process, involved with the training, involved with the drills, is being proactive. Then there's the reactive agencies. And I wish I could say that even communities, that all the communities that we work with have proactive police departments. Sometimes they just don't have it, you know, whatever the disconnect may be. So what you have is invaluable. It's invaluable.
Last question I have for you with regards, once you give us an evaluation and some recommendations and assume that we adopt them all, I think you touched on this, if you're going to just expand on it a little bit, what do you do in terms of reevaluating, making sure that what we put in place is actually working, is effective and being done right? Is that part of the package as well and how does that look?
So typically what happens is that in the first 12 months, we're doing a lot of time-consuming work of assessing, implementation, training. But many of these projects are going to carry over to multiple school years, particularly ones that might even have a, you know, a dollar figure associated with them. I mean, districts don't have unlimited, you know, resources financially. So, you know, even though potentially sometimes the communities want districts to move ahead with, you know, multimillion-dollar projects and infrastructure changes and technology, the reality is, is that you have to figure out where are we going to get the best return on our investment? And for those things that might have a significant price tag associated with them, how do we prioritize those and have a long-range plan to say, you know, three years from now, five years from now and beyond? So that's one of the things that we work on as well. Just about every district that we start with continues with us for many, many years. So it's an ongoing arrangement. Our work with the district might be less in year two and beyond because we're basically maintaining, you know, what you have. But typically every year, we come back and do follow-up assessments, which are not nearly as comprehensive as the initial one, but the objective is to determine where are we at with these improvement opportunities, you know, how do we close these gaps? Because it's useless to pay someone to come into your district to tell you what you need to do and to your point, but then not to see it through. Because then you're not making real progress. It's essentially, I'm a Tony Robbins, you know, coming up here and being a motivational speaker for you. You want someone that's going to come in, tell you what you need to do, guide you through the process, and make sure that people are accountable to get it done. And again, that's our responsibility to help the district to do that.
How do you assess? I mean, is it just talking to folks or is it, is there some sort of testing that you do? Is that, you know, what you do sort of like a try and get in or type thing or, you know, role-playing type stuff? How far do you ask to take it and what do you normally do? Test the effectiveness of what's being put in place?
So it's kind of all of the above. So essentially, when we do the initial assessment, we're interviewing, we're walking the buildings, we're doing off-site document reviews, policies and procedures, you know, speaking with the police department to find out what their interaction is, what their concerns are. As far as the follow-up to that, that's one of those 5% district buy-in things. So yes, you know, we call them red team exercises, that some districts say, we want you to come in to test our ability to prevent people from coming out. Some districts say, do not come into our school scraggly with a hoodie on and trying to get into schools. Well, we're fine with you coming by in a suit and tie and checking the building. So it's really where the buy-in of the district is on there.
One last thing, as Carl said earlier, on April 10th, we have our vote for our Capitol project and part of that is money allocated for security entrance vestibule into Cottle and also security enhancements at the upper entrance on the upper hill. And I would assume that you will work with us on that as well as to what the recommendations would be there. Right now, it's in a very initial design phase. So as that develops and, you know, your expertise as to what other districts have, what works well and what we need to be in place there, I would assume you would work with us on that.
Right. So what typically happens, because there are many districts in the same situation that you are, that they're either in the process of or going to be, you know, doing major Capitol projects. So our consulting service covers the safety, security, and emergency preparedness intervention that's outlined in our agreement with the district. If the district wants us to consult with the, let's say, the architects, the construction manager company, you know, on a specific big project that's going on there, in many cases, that is going to be a separate, you know, it's not, it's nominal, but it's outside the scope of what our agreement is because that typically, so if we're going to be meeting with architects, we're going to be meeting with construction people, there's just associated time with that. So we would determine what the scope of the project is and then whatever the additional costs is would be, you know, added to a agreement as a separate agreement.
I mean, I'm just speaking of my opinion. I think that would be such valuable input, you know. While we're doing that, we would need to have an expert be able to advise us and meet with our architect on that. I think that would be something we would definitely be interested in taking a look at.
And many, we're working with KGND right now on another, a couple of other districts are going through with very large projects as well. Same exact type of thing. So we're working with the architects, you know, looking at their plans, you know, do you see anything on the plans that we should be concerned about, making some minor modifications to things, which is great. I mean, you're at a perfect time right now to be starting this process because nothing's been done. I mean, when we go into districts that have just completed construction and we go in and say, oh my God, I wouldn't have done it that way. And now you're either stuck with it or you have to, you know, throw more money at it to modify something that you just did. So you're at a perfect, you know, juncture where you can actually have that input and get it done the right way that reflects the best practices. KGND is a fantastic architecture firm. They work with so many school districts, so they get it. But again, you know, they're trying to find that balance of architectural efficiency, safety and security, and they, you know, they like to have the input as far as what we see as best practices and what other districts are doing as well.
How big is your firm, John?
Oh, we're a team of six.
Six.
Not including support personnel, office people.
Six consultants?
Yes.
Anything else? Yeah, I just wanted to see if anyone from the audience would like to ask a question of the consultant while he's here or anything that they'd like to add.
So you said that you have six people, I'm not from the law enforcement background, and you said that you're a law enforcement administrator. A, what does that mean? And B, what are the background of the six people?
Sure. So I was a police lieutenant here in Westchester County. Everyone on our staff has a law enforcement background or emergency management background. That being said, one of the things that we're very sensitive of is that law enforcement doesn't necessarily mean that you're qualified to manage safety and security in a K-12 school because schools are unique environments. We often get asked is, do we work with private corporations? The answer is no. Our wheelhouse is K-12 schools because you can't have a heavy hand because you have to find that balance between safe and secure schools, but keeping in mind that they're schools. So we're not trying to turn them into prisons or military installations, even though military installations can be breached as well. So you have to find that fine balance and we're very, very good at, you know, working with schools to find that, you know, right mix of how do we, you know, keep everyone in the building safe? How do we prevent things from happening in the first place, you know, going forward? Sure.
And Lieutenant Hunter, did you have anything you wanted to add?
If anybody has any questions, I could make a couple comments. I would reiterate, you know, most of what Mr. Laplaca says. I think...
Jeff, come to the podium, maybe switch with John, so you're on camera.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Like I said, I would reiterate most of what Mr. Laplaca says. And as Chief Bonzi and I had said in our meeting, that when we met recently after the Parkland incident, we have a surprisingly strong relationship with both districts. So our communication, you know, and I'll kind of give kudos, I gave it in an email or in a writing at some point, two to three hours after the Parkland incident, your superintendent was on the phone with me that evening trying to figure out, what do we do tomorrow? Are we going to have school presence or, you know, and where do we go from here? So I have to give credit to Superintendent Albano, you know, for reaching out like that. But he does that because he's comfortable in doing so. And it's not only me. I know Detective Sergeant Kiernan is very heavily involved within the school. We have Detective Santa Moro, who's our youth officer, who's heavily involved in the school. We have sector cars that make daily or somewhat regular check-ins in the schools. I have a list of some of the items, if you wanted me to go over some of the safety measures that we already have in place. Many of these from the lockdown drills, you know, as you said, we're present at all of the lockdown drills and we're not present with one officer, we're present with five, you know, six at times. At times, we have TUCO PD join us in those because they would also be a responding department. We're current, you know, it's part of this and it's kind of out of order, but we work, we have a multi-jurisdictional emergency response unit. We have good relationships with the surrounding departments, work well together. We're in the works right now of having a joint training with Eastchester, TUCO, and Bronxville PDs in early April in some of these issues. We've done it in the past. Many of the things that you'll be asked to do are probably in place. Listening to Mr. Laplaca, he's obviously well-versed, you know, in the whole planning structure and all this. He's a professional, as you could see. And I'd be excited to work alongside, you know, the district and Mr. Laplaca in, you know, building the security around the schools, you know, to the best extent possible. Some of the words that you hear tonight are resources, balance, you know, things like that. And those are all things that we always consider. The Eastchester Police Department is not the security firm for the TUCO School District. We'll be here when we can, but we also have other responsibilities. So whether or not there's security on-site is a district decision. We support it, you know, I can say that publicly. Chief Bonzi would have liked to have been here tonight. He's out of town currently. But if you'd like me to review some of the things that we currently have in place, I'd be happy to. Or if you have any questions of our department.
Do you want to just come forward with your question, only because everyone at home can hear you? Thank you.
My question was really more for the board, but since Lieutenant Hunter's here speaking... My name's Chris Ferris. I live at 53 List Bernard. I guess I have a question for the board and then a question for the lieutenant. In, so I'm assuming the, I'm going to be optimistic and assume the bond's going to pass on April 10th. So at some point in either 2019 or 2020, we'll have the new security room at Cottle at least on the entryway, right? What's going to be done between now and then at the entrance at Cottle? Because the way I see it, there is no security at the entrance at Cottle. Anybody can come and go. And, you know, just a humorous story, you know, I go there and pick up my...
Okay, you know what? I think I'm going to stop you because it's not that I don't want you to be able to express what your concerns are, but I want to be cautious of what we're going to say publicly just so that we don't...
Well, something should be done about the entrance because there's no security.
I'm not going to disagree and I don't want you to take that as that we're not listening.
I do, but, okay.
No, 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 don't, don't, don't. I think you can contact any one of us here, the superintendent, anybody, and have that con, or your principal, and have that conversation. Because my concern is I don't want to, I would like to be cautious, as Pete had said at our last meeting last week, we just want to be sensitive of what we publicly put out into the community. So you can go ahead, give it what I said, if you can do it in a way that...
Okay, well, my point is, is anyone can be buzzed in. My four-year-old son runs ahead of me and presses that buzzer and God bless the high school kids that work there in the afternoon, they're great kids, but they'll buzz anybody in. So something needs to be gone about that front door.
Yeah, to her point, we don't want to put...
Anyone can get access.
We don't want that to be known.
Well, it's widely known, I mean, people come and go.
If you want to keep the kids safe is what I'm saying right now. We get what you're saying totally and we may very well even agree with you and we want to do something too, but we don't want, we don't want other people to know what our soft spots are.
Okay.
This is just not the forum. What you're saying is very important.
Yes, it's very important.
I think it's the forum, but okay.
Because it's public.
It's not because you're on public television. It really is not the forum. So at that point, we welcome a conversation with you, but this is just not the place.
Fair enough.
And it's for the sake of your children and all the children.
Fair enough. But I'd like to ask, like, you know, this, why can't, you know, I don't know how many PD, how many officers Eastchester has? I think TUCO has something like 32 is my understanding. Is there any reason why we can't have an officer that's assigned to our school district? Who, I mean, it's great that you guys patrol, I love that. I love that you're involved in the lockdown drills. I didn't know that. But is there a reason that an officer can't literally be assigned to be in this area every day, all day?
Do we want...
I mean, I would love that because...
The Eastchester Police Department at full complement has 49 officers. Currently, we're not at full complement, just only due to typical things that happen within police departments, injuries and disabilities and things like that. So TUCO PD is about half of our size, in the 20s.
Okay.
We are in talks actually with the district on potentially getting either someone in full-time or part-time on a more regular basis, you know, to be within the district. But some of these issues are district-wide issues, budgetary issues, other things like that, resource issues, and having the perfect round peg in the round hole. We don't want to just plug somebody into a school.
Sure.
Has to be the right person in a school. So there are a lot of things that go into those type decisions and we are in talks about those.
Right. And I'm not, I'm not saying we should militarize the school or armed teachers or anything like that. It would just be nice to know that there's someone who's trained, who's in the vicinity because in the event of a Parkland, five minutes? It can't be five minutes till you guys get there. It's over. So that's why we need, that's why...
I understand, I fully understand your concern. In a perfect world, we'd have, the Eastchester Police Department is responsible for nine schools right now. So although you would like, you would like a federal officer in Cottle School...
I get it, I get it.
We have multiple schools. But then, so what we've done, we implemented a couple of years ago that people may not be familiar with, we do school check-ins. So our officers are required, mandated throughout the month to make a certain number of school check-ins. It helps to make them more familiar with the schools. It's a police presence within the schools, an armed police presence. And we feel that it's good that they intermingle with, you know, with the kids. They're encouraged to go to cafeterias, to go to other areas of the school that they may not be familiar with. So we have implemented that, but not only in the high school, middle school, but Cottle, all the elementary schools, Eastchester High School, Middle School, Waverly School, and Hutch-Greenbale School. So we, you know, we're implementing some of these things within the boundaries of the resources that we have and we'd like to improve.
Okay, you know what I think I'm going to suggest? We did talk about it and I apologize because I should have framed the conversation and because I should have framed the conversation, and, and I don't want, I don't want to put you on the spot like that. I apologize. But why don't we have, we can maybe plan it through with the PTA, and we can have an in-house town hall where we can bring in our police department, Lieutenant Hunter, and, and the parents can openly discuss what's on their mind. I know, and, and I, and I feel it, and I understand it, and I know there's a lot that the parents would like to express. But I think we should do it in, in a different forum.
Non, non-televized.
And not, not on a televised meeting, and I do apologize for that.
And I, and I, by the way, I mean no disrespect. Actually, I'm very impressed and happy that you guys are bringing in a consulting firm to take a look at this. I'm, I'm very impressed by that, and I think it's wonderful. I just, it's a simple question. I'm just concerned about the front entrance and what's going to be done in the interim until we get that new, that's what I'd like to know.
And any of your concerns, and any parent who has something on their mind, please be in touch with us. We don't want you to not tell us, and we do want you to be able to express your concerns to us, and, and we, we do want to hear it. So I don't want to, to, to lead you a different way. I'm sorry.
And I think a lot of the concerns that all of you have, just so that you know, they're not any different than the ones that we've had. But I think, yeah, we're just trying to say we need to do it sort of offline.
One of, one of the things that I would want to leave with, and we, you know, after unfortunate incidents like Parkland that have occurred or going to still unfortunately likely occur in the future, people jump, latch on to the security aspect of things, and I know that Mr. Laplaca touched on this. One of the things, and we discussed it in our meeting, I truly believe that communication is going to be our number-one tool in protecting the kids in the schools. We've had, we've had situations because of our relationships within Tocco and Eastchester schools that have potentially thwarted issues that could have occurred. But it's because of the communication that's been in place. And that obviously can always improve, but we need to really focus a lot of our energy since the police department is only a piece of the puzzle. You know, we're definitely not the major player here. Unfortunately, even if we have somebody in the school, we may not be the major player. The major player is really the communication. Students, staff, teachers, mental health, professionals. People that get information or see something funny, share it with someone, then we can intervene, or you can intervene. And, you know, that's how we're going to deter these situations from happening. Like Mr. Laplaca said, people go to metal detectors, you know, and cordoning off your school grounds and all of that. There are always ways around, you know, those defenses. But it's really about the bullying, the social media, the communication. Kids should, should share information with their parents. Teachers should share information. If they're getting stories that somebody's writing that seem a little peculiar, share it with somebody within your building. I think that's really going to be the key to this. But I look forward to working with John and, and with you guys to, to improve from here.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
Okay. Allison, go ahead.
Allison Hallerent, one fifteen Middleton Place. I'm also the PTA president. And I am also a family member of a victim of the Parkland shooting. To give you an idea of the outcome of it, this is a picture of my niece Gina and I in the summer when we were at Universal Studios, spending an entire day together at Harry Potter. This is a picture of us in Hawaii when she was showing me how to paddleboard in November. This is a picture of my entire family at Christmas with my niece Gina. This is us on New Year's Day, celebrating all that two thousand and eighteen had to hold. And this is a picture of my niece Gina on February fourteenth, Valentine's Day. She became the face of the tragedy. And when I advocate for better safety in this school, Lieutenant Hunter, Mr. Laplaca, and the school board, being a member of the safety committee, this is what I'm hoping no family ever has to go through. Because I have been to Parkland. I have spent the last month down there. And I can tell you that their schools had much better safety procedures set up already, and this is still the result. So we will be focusing on better police presence, Lieutenant, because we do need more here. I see the other schools. I drive around town all day long. I work in Bronxville. I, you know, go around here. Tocco has the least amount of police presence. For, I appreciate all you guys do, but we do need more here. And Mr. Laplaca, I appreciate the fact that this is a, she had a better chance of getting struck by lightning than getting shot by this gun several times. But it is still a reality. It is still what happens. And we're not going to forget about it. We're not going to push it aside. We're not going to say it happened a thousand miles away. Because it happened in Sandy Hook. It happened here. It happened, it happened here. It happened to me, the president of this PTA. It happened to. So I know we're not going to make it, you know, super secure and, and that stuff. I want my kids to be happy and still come here, but we are going to make sure that this does not happen and is not downplayed. Thank you.
Thank you, Allison. Is there anybody else? Yes, please, Sarah.
So my question is, I'm not sure how the timeline is. So if you approve that we're going to work with this consultant, and he comes in and he does his assessments, we then have budget that will also be voted on before the end of the school year. So if you come in and you recommend that we need more security guards, is that going to be able to be paid for in the budget? How's that going to work? How's that timeline going to work?
Well, right after this presentation, we do have a budget presentation, and it's going to be addressed in that presentation.
So I'm hoping that we're getting more security.
We are planning for it.
We have money earmarked, but we, we want to be thoughtful in, in how we spend it and, and do, just do it in a, in a very thoughtful and deliberate way. So we will talk, speak to that, and I, I know, I don't want to speak on behalf of the entire board, but I know if, if there is more that needs to happen, I have to believe that we bring it to the board even after the budget, that they will be receptive to whatever is needed.
My biggest concern is after hours. I do not believe that we have security after hours, and we have kids in and out of our schools with zero security.
We are addressing that in the budget.
Sorry, I know, I'm sorry. Again, I'm sorry.
There are a couple of items that were mentioned to you tonight already that, that we as a board and as, and the superintendent have already addressed. This is sort of law-hanging fruit that you mentioned before. And even before we've got your evaluation, we know need to be done. And that's already being addressed in our discussions internally with how we're going to do, we're dealing with the budget coming forward. So some of these basic things we've kind of mentioned already are being addressed. And, and just one more comment, you can go ahead, with regard to keeping the conversation going, to your point, Allison. It's one of the reasons why we suggested having a security committee. I think that's one of the main reasons why we, we brought it up was so that if we have a committee, we continue talking about it. Because that is very common, right, that, that it happens. And we won't let it happen here, Allison, I know. But events happen in Parkland, and people get all excited about it, and then people tend to forget about it, and we move on. And I think the idea, one of the concepts of having a security committee is so that we're forced to have that conversation two, three times a year, where we're getting together all the principals and talking about security. So just having the conversation, keeping the conversation going is really one of the main reasons why I thought the committee was a good idea.
I just had a quick question for Lieutenant Hunter. I, I think it's great that you're working with Tocco Police Department as well. And you said that you guys cover nine schools, which I think a lot of people didn't realize. And I didn't, I don't know, so I want to ask you, how many schools does Tocco Police Department? How many are they responsible for?
Technically, within their jurisdiction, they don't have any youth-based schools.
That's right, that's what I thought, so I wasn't sure.
So he's just a, he's just, Tocco High School, Middle School, and Cottle School are in the jurisdictional boundaries of Eastchester PD. We also, because they are in both of our communities, we think of Immaculate Conception School as one of our schools, you know, and, God forbid, we have to respond there. And we are in active communication with them also. So, but we do have an exceptional relationship with Tocco PD, trained together. The chiefs are very, very close, work, in, working relationship then, and as personal friends. So, you know, we, we intend to work even closer together, and hopefully we can be a bigger presence and do whatever we can do to maintain better security around the schools.
Great, that's what I thought.
I have a question from Mr. Laplaca. I'm Shaykan Lynn Loma, fifty-nine Archer Drive. I'm also a prosecutor. I spent most of my career in child, physical and sexual abuse prosecution. I wanted to know what the scope of your risk assessment was. One of the things in particular that I was wondering is if you're addressing intimate violence, specifically domestic violence, are there opportunities for our employees to report if they have someone with whom they're intimate or have been intimate, who they believe are violent or might bring that violence into the school? I work in Brooklyn, but that is something that we see, where the violence pours into the school and then affects the children. Also, sexual abuse, is that something that you look at? The reporting, the outcry, what happens? When are we making SCR reports? When are we putting people in the rubber room? I mean, how is that working in our community?
So specifically in regards to sexual harassment-
John, would you, would you just come up to the mic so we can pick you up on camera?
So specifically in regards to the sexual harassment and the domestic violence, we don't specifically look at that, but what I will tell you is one of the components that we do look at and have to have in place is the anonymous reporting component. Because again, typically, school districts have in place a policy and procedure now for those mechanisms. And certainly, we, you know, we're, we're looking at those policies and procedures to make sure that they're at least in place. The other component is the anonymous reporting. So for the people that simply don't feel comfortable coming forward about violence, sexual abuse, anything under that umbrella, is to have that in place. And some districts actually have anonymous reporting in place that is simply a, a form that captures information, but it is not a manned receipt. So essentially, if someone makes a report, that may not be looked at for twelve hours. Even though we like to say that everyone is connected and we're constantly looking at their emails, you know, timing is such that we want to make sure that those are captured and the referrals are made appropriately. So our recommendation always is going to be, to give you a piece of, you know, what you'll probably see, is that any anonymous reporting systems that are put into place in the district should be a manned service. And they're, they're available for no cost. Because again, if somebody makes a report on a Friday night at ten o'clock that someone was the victim of sexual abuse, that someone has a weapon, someone, you know, some type of issue, that they simply didn't feel comfortable going to someone, a colleague, an administrator, or even the police department, we want to make sure that we capture that information and it goes to the right person, you know, truly anonymously. And, you know, sometimes it's a school issue, sometimes it's a law enforcement issue, sometimes it's both. And they have the ability to make the referrals to the right entities immediately, so that nothing gets lost in the shuffle.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just Neil Denning, twenty-five Sevens Avenue. Just one quick question, looking forward at the agenda with respect to the safety committee. Did you guys consider anybody from TASK, considering that's front of day and a day?
You know, this, this district-wide safety committee includes also the, the key community leaders. You will see the town supervisor, the mayor of the Village of Tocco, the police chiefs. I, I do agree with you that TASK should be involved at the building level, particularly at Cottle. So if that is not in place already, we certainly would consider that. Good suggestion.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Neil. Anybody else? Anyone on the board? Okay. Okay, so what we're going to do now is we're going to move on with the agenda. If you want to take a minute, I don't know if anyone who may wanted to leave or please feel free to step out. I don't want to keep you here. And Jeff's going back to work. Thank you, Lieutenant Hunter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll go, we'll go back to the agenda. Okay, so going back to the agenda, Lee, did you want to keep your comments to the budget presentation?
Yeah, I thought I could give that.
Comments from the PTA and the Tocco School Foundation. Allison, did you have anything from the PTA?
Okay. Last Thursday, we held our second general meeting. We hosted Speaker Michael Ahorn, who talked to our crowd of approximately two hundred people of his struggle with addiction, how he became, how he went from typical Westchester teenager to an addict. And his, we had a lot of kids show up, which, high schoolers, which we were really happy about so that they can hear his message and keep that in mind. This Wednesday, we're hosting the Taste of Tocco for the middle school and high school students. It's always a huge hit. The kids love the lunch that we bring in for them. On Saturday, we have our annual science fun day for students K through eight. This year, we have some great programs lined up, including the very popular Star Lab from the New York Hall of Science, I think. April thirteenth is our annual fundraiser, the Spring Social, which will be held at the Bronxville Fields Club. Invitations were sent out last week. Please RSVP. If you would like to pay via PayPal using your credit card, you could do that on SchoolBee. We are also looking for prize donations. Please contact us if you have something you would like to donate. Time shares, sporting event tickets, possibly even a group donation are always great prizes. Our Harlem Wizards event has been rescheduled to April twenty-second. Please use your original, April twenty-second at three PM. We did change the time. Please use the original tickets for the rescheduled date. The PTA is also working on our communication efforts for the bond vote. We have held two successful parent events recently where we verbally reminded everyone of the bond vote on April tenth and the information sessions. We are in the middle of compiling two different communications regarding it. We're going to, our plan is to break it up. Within the next couple of days, we're going to send out a communication regarding how to be an informed voter coming to the two tours and where they could find the information on the website and how to get absentee ballots if they're not going to be here because the vote's right after spring break. And then once April comes, we're going to switch gears and kind of go more towards remember to vote, we support the vote, the PTA is in support of the bond, and kind of reminding and pushing from that direction. So prior to April, we're going to do more of this is how you become informed of what the project is. And after April, we'll start with the please remember to vote. And that's about it for now. Thanks.
Thank you, Allison. Regina, Tocco School Foundation?
Okay. On Saturday, March tenth, the Tocco School Foundation held an informal fundraiser at Mickey Spillane's, and it was a very successful event. We had a great turnout. Thank you to all the parents and families. People went there with their children and eight. Thank you for coming. We want to thank you all for coming and supporting the Tocco School Foundation. We also want to thank Mickey Spillane's, who generously donated ten percent of the sales back to the Tocco School Foundation. We had a fifty-fifty raffle and sold various merchandise. It was a fun evening, and we look forward to planning similar events again. All the money raised will help us fund grants and scholarships. At this time, each building principal should have received an email from Deanna Mullen about the grant application process. We're asking the applications be submitted by April twentieth. They can access the forms and submit them directly online through our Tocco School Foundation website. Also, we're encouraging all the graduating seniors to speak to their guidance counselors to apply for scholarships. Graduation will be coming soon, so please speak to your counselors and apply for the scholarships. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Okay, now we're going to go on with the budget presentation?
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. So this is the second presentation of our annual budget. So we are looking at the eighteen-nineteen school year budget. Ms. Lou and I gave an initial presentation last week. Our Board of Education and, and some community members have given us feedback, so you will notice some differences. The parts that I covered in depth last week, I will move through rather quickly. Every version of this presentation will be posted on the website so you could see as, as things develop and progress throughout this process. So I will begin, need to put my glasses on, excuse me. So I will begin with the goals, and, and we always start with our district's goals, and we make sure that the budget is supporting what we are trying to accomplish academically, with our facilities, with safety, and, and with various other things. So if you take a look at this list, there are- are things such as maintaining 11 AP courses in our high school. The most recent that was added was AP Computer Science. This budget maintains all of them. Some of those AP courses do have small enrollment numbers. However, we're very committed to AP courses, because that is certainly a key component of a high-quality high school. Also, we have a thriving strings program in the middle school, under the leadership of Charles Duchateau. And we are expanding, we're investing in expanding that program into the high school, where Mr. Duchateau will continue to work with string students as they progress. Also, we are maintaining all of the co-curricular and athletics programs that we added this year. Mid-year, there was some opportunity and some interest in particular programs, and the Board was supportive enough to go forward and fund those programs. They will remain, especially with the success that we've had. What is new is a Director of Special Education for the District. This is a person that would serve pre-K through grade 12. And I say pre-K, because we have students that are receiving services before they come to us, and early intervention is very important. I'll speak a little bit more to that in a moment. There's a number of new special education classes. One is an ABA program, Applied Behavior Analysis, working with children with autism. Also, we are adding two spots for career and technical education programs for students at our high school, and expanding our 15-1 small class program, or special class program, into particular subject areas in the high school. I believe specifically, we're adding it into Global History. Also, we are continuing to work with teacher leaders. Last year, for the first time in many years, we implemented a teacher leadership model to move forward a curriculum initiative called the Writing Revolution, which is a K through 12 initiative, where all of our students are learning similar writing strategies. Those teacher leaders, we've invested in them. There's been a tremendous amount of professional development. This summer, they will work directly with Dr. Judith Hockman, who's the founder of this program, and then the idea is that they will provide support, leadership, turnkey training to their staff members, their colleagues. Also, we are continuing our work with ENL students. This is a requirement. Dr. McDonald has set up some very high-quality professional development for all teachers, because at some point, all of our staff will have children who have learned English as their second language, or as a new language, ENL. Also, at the high school, Dr. Linehan spearheaded a visual literacy initiative, a partnership with Jacob Burns Film Center in Pleasantville. We had a number of teachers, particularly in the English department, train with them last summer. They've implemented some very exciting and innovative instruction based on visual literacy and skills that they learned, and we want to continue to support that going forward. You heard from our consultant, John Laplaca, from Alteris Consulting. We certainly have that in the budget. Although we are not waiting for next year, we are working with him immediately. The contracts already have been signed, by the way. Also, we are increasing our operation and maintenance budget for immediate safety and security upgrades. So if John comes back to us with recommendations, even as early as, you know, a week or two, or next month, we are prepared to go ahead and implement. Also, we believe there is a need. The Board has conducted several tours of our school facilities. And although we've done some work, and we'll speak a little more to this, in refurbishing classrooms and adding furniture, and we have this bond, which, you know, if it is approved, will give us eight new classrooms fully furnished. However, we, our existing classrooms, we believe, need some upgrades, such as painting, replacement of ceiling tiles, floor tiles, potentially shades or blinds, as well as furniture. Also, maintaining a transparent budget process, this is part of that. But Ms. Lou also has a Budget Advisory Committee that has been meeting throughout the year. This is a very transparent process, but it does start internally. Back in December, Ms. Lou, the administrative team, goes forward with recommendations. I know our administrators have listened to their PPLT committees, and it is a collaborative process. And at this point now, we are at the public stage, the public information stage, and there will be a few more presentations that follow this one. The next one is to implement a Facilities Director within the facilities budget. And what that means is, this is not a new position. So we do have a vacancy right now, and our goal is to bring in someone with a high level of expertise, that not only can work alongside our facilities and custodial staff, but also has such a high level of expertise that they can do training and provide, you know, professional development. There are a lot of exciting new things happening in the area of facilities, such as green, you know, green products, new technologies that can make you more efficient in your work. And that's what we're hoping to gain by implementing that. Also, with a potential large construction project on the horizon, we think this position will be invaluable. Also, just continue to identify areas for cost efficiencies that will generate revenues. What does that mean? Well, a few examples, just Ms. Lou works with other districts and with our BOCs to try to share services, like transportation is one good example of that, where if we work with other districts, if we have, you know, three students that are going to a particular private school, and Eastchester does, and maybe Pelham, that we can combine and realize some cost savings as a result. Also, we have a goal that we've had for a number of years, and that is to stay within the allowable tax levy. Ms. Lou is going to really go over those numbers and explain what that means. But this year, it is 3.12% that we are allowed to propose to the public. Just quickly, enrollment, as you could see at the elementary school on the left side, you will see this year's enrollment numbers. For the most part, we are either in four sections or five sections at every grade level. Next year, our intention is to maintain four sections in kindergarten and first grade, and then second, third, and fourth, five sections. And then in fifth grade next year, we are projecting four sections. This is not an exact science. Past trends don't always indicate what will happen, but I assure you, it is something that we continue to track. We are out of classrooms, as you know, and we lost our art room, because we needed a classroom. The only other classroom that we can see right now is potentially the library, but we're holding off on that. Mr. Cuglietto, Mr. Kilgallen, on a weekly basis, track kindergarten registrations. So we are thinking that, you know, it's safe to assume that we will not exceed 92. If that changes, we will come right back to the Board of Education and continue to have discussions if we think that may go higher. The elementary school, in this budget, we definitely have included money for after-school security. What that looks like exactly, we haven't determined, but we may partner, for example, with TASK. The district may fund that. We may even reach out to PTA, who has programs after school, but no matter what, there will be after-school security. There is a slight increase to academic intervention services, and that is provided by a certified teacher, of course. So that is part of this budget. And then also, we have new science standards from New York State, and we need to do a curriculum alignment. So there is money for science resources to align with the new state standards. Also, professional development for teachers, I mentioned that earlier. And then, the ABA program, or Applied Behavior Analysis, that is the technique used. We had a program for kindergarten and first grade. We have some students, it's been very successful. We've had students who have, you know, aged up, so we created a second section this year. It was not in the budget, but the need was there. The Board supported it, and we're maintaining that going into next school year. Again, I don't want to be repetitive. Writing Revolution is in there. STAR Assessment is our normed assessment that is used for progress monitoring at the elementary school. Various programs, enrichment, we have chess, we have language, theater, diversity, strings, and online math, all included in the budget. These are usually not big cost drivers, but they are valuable to our students. But we are adding a Student Government Advisor at Cottle. We have geo-organizations at the middle school and high school. I think it's long overdue, and next year, Cottle will have student government representatives. The middle school class sizes, as you can see, are, in my opinion, very desirable. The only grade that is a little bit on the high side is grade six, with 25 students per section. We are anticipating that those students will stay with us and move into grade seven, but you see an average class size, 21, 25, and then 21 in eighth grade. Some highlights at the middle school, and not all these are budget drivers, but they will be supported by the budget, I should say. Having four classes at every grade level, Mr. Barnett can tell you, is the ideal, because you can have what is called a teaming model. And the idea is that teachers have collaborative planning time to work on curriculum initiatives, on things that, you know, initiatives that go across the curricula, and also to support students. So if a student, you know, is, you know, either needs support in one subject, the teachers can communicate with one another, and their counselors and school administrators. So that is in effect. Also, Mr. Barnett, with the Science Department, has developed a STEAM program. He has a framework for it, and this would be a 10-week quarterly course for everyone in grades six, seven, and eight. It's very exciting. It'll cover topics such as engineering, robotics, coding, digital ethics, renewable energy, and situational problem solving. It will be very engaging and hands-on, and we think a welcomed addition to the middle school programs. Also, at the middle school, a 10-week course for grades six and eight, which will be geography and world events. And then, there are 15-1 special classes that were implemented this past year that we will maintain. And then, late bus transportation, not just for middle, this is for middle and high school. By contract, our teachers provide after-school extra help. Each one, one hour per week at the middle high school. Therefore, it is advantageous to have a late bus, so students can take advantage of that extra help, particularly during the winter, and then have a safe transportation ride home. The high school, you just see the grade levels. I don't do an average class size, because at the high school, there's much more choice. So there are electives, and, but basically, across the grade level, you see, next year, we're projecting 85 students in grade nine, 62 in grade 10, 89 in grade 11, and 56 in grade 12. We have a small graduating class. But the total of the high school is increasing slightly in our projections. These are just the AP courses. Dr. Linehan, when the Geometry Common Core was rolled out by the state, this is a challenging curriculum. Dr. Linehan, a couple of years back, proposed adding labs, so students had more instructional time for a very challenging course. I think that has been beneficial to the students, and that is in this budget. We're going to maintain it. Online course opportunities, sometimes, being a small school, we can't offer everything, but the quality of online courses has grown, and we have, we maintain that in the budget, because we've had a very good experience with that. Strings, I mentioned earlier. And then, also keeping some new activities that we've added this past year. One is Habitat for Humanity. Bart, correct me if I'm wrong, I think somewhere between 40 and 50% of our high school students at some point are participating in Habitat for Humanity, under the direction of Joanne Ornstein, who does an amazing job. And that's pretty impressive, you know, and they go on multiple builds throughout the year. So the staffing additions, we are adding teachers. Grand total of two and a half teachers. You see the breakdown, 1.2 at the elementary level, 1.3 at the middle high school. Also, we are adding some teaching assistants. Now, these have been added this year. Earlier, I mentioned that the ABA program was extended. So we had one section serving K and 1. We added a section. So that staff needed to be maintained. So it's not new, year over year, but it's something that we added during the year. We didn't anticipate it, and now we integrate it into the budget going forward. New staffing is the Director of Special Ed, which I talked about earlier, and I'm going to elaborate on. The Facilities Director, it is not a budget driver, or has no impact to the budget. Eight tenths of a teacher at the high school, and a point two at our middle school. The Special Education Director, I added this slide, this is new, from my last presentation, because we did get some questions about that. You know, why is it important? Why is it needed? Who's doing it now? So I think it required a little bit more explanation. So currently, Dr. McDonald, who is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Instruction, and Pupil Personnel, is overseeing special education. However, there's a third piece to her job that has been growing and growing year after year, and that is technology. And when I was in Dr. McDonald's role, and which started in 2012, the technology was very different. There was no wireless infrastructure throughout the district. So one of my first goals was to implement a wireless infrastructure for Tuckahoe. That was a starting point. Then, a couple of years later, when Dr. Nutzi was here, we went into a full one-to-one initiative with technology. Now, we can't even imagine life in the schools without one-to-one technology. So every student in grade two through 12 has access to a Chromebook. We have one for every student. In K and 1, keyboarding is, they're a little young for keyboarding, so we have iPads on cars. We do have some access to Chromebooks, but we don't issue a one-to-one in the early grades, and we do believe that they still need to be writing. And there is a lot of benefit to that, especially with our Writing Revolution program. So the Special Education Director, we believe, is needed at this time, because Dr. McDonald, her responsibilities, again, in the area of technology, have grown exponentially, and she's been pulled away from work with special education. So for example, chairing CSE meetings. Occasionally, she does. But that's a very time-consuming responsibility. It's a very important responsibility. And right now, our psychologist are chairing meetings, okay? The students coming in from out of district, a lot of that responsibility has fallen on one of our guidance counselors, who we do compensate over the summer, but Ms. DeFrancisco is someone who's mainly responsible for two things. All students placed out of district, she is making sure she's providing the support needed. And that number, if you look, in 2012, let me bring you through some statistics. In 2012, 26 Tuckahoe students were attending out-of-district placements, and approximately 100,000 per student, including transportation and program. Today, nine students are placed out of district. And that's a dramatic reduction. Not everyone came back, some did graduate, but what we do is, when we have students who we can serve here in the Tuckahoe schools, if we don't have a program and we have two or three students with similar needs, we've decided to create programs. Not for the financial aspect of it, this is a budget presentation, so I'm looking at the financial aspect, but we just believe fundamentally that it is correct, that students deserve to be in their home district whenever possible. We will never have a program for every child with a disability. We are a small district. Some need to be placed out due to their needs. However, when possible, we do keep them in district. But that requires a lot of thoughtful planning and effort, and we think someone solely focused on special education can do that effectively. Also, in 2012, we had approximately 12, I think it was either 12 or 13, non-resident special education tuition students attending Tuckahoe. Okay, so those are students from other districts, where they pay to come to our school. Well, today, I'm proud to say we have 23 students from other districts attending schools here. Now, we have not opened up programs for the tuition students. I want to be very clear about that. If we have a program, what I said earlier, two or three students with a similar need, so we need to run the program. If that class can accommodate eight, or even 12 students, then there are seats, and then only if the students are a good match for our program, and the needs are similar to our students' needs, only then will we take tuition. And again, the person who has been doing the bulk of this work is Ms. DeFrancisco. And it pulls her away from some of her guidance responsibilities, but she's happy to do it, and she's very effective at it. But you can see, the end result is that there is currently $1.2 million in revenue coming into our district. And that's pretty significant. And we are not trying to generate profit from this, but the costs of special education are very high. And this helps to offset those costs and provide our children with the highest quality programs. So this is why we think one person dedicated to special education is needed. That's why I'm making the recommendation. There's been a lot of thoughtful consideration around it. And I will also add that you probably couldn't find a district anywhere in this area, Westchester, Putnam County, that doesn't have one person, one administrator dedicated to special education. Very rare that, or maybe nonexistent, that you would see someone trying to do two or even three major responsibilities.
Carl, I just had a question. Is that everything on there? Because I thought you had mentioned also, within that role of the Director of Special Ed, that they would also have some sort of role in working with the teachers that are the co-teachers, co-talk classes?
Cynthia, thank you for prompting me. So I don't, very important. So I don't, very important. The Director of Special Ed will not just work with out-of-district students or tuition students. That's what's driving the need up. However, this person will serve all, and I said it earlier, but it needs to be emphasized, because that was another question that came in. All of our students who have an IEP from pre-K all the way up through Grade 12 will be supported by this position, okay? The psychologist, like I said, will be supported. So we have a range of programs. We have inclusion models, we have consultant teacher services, we have co-teaching, we have the Special Class 15-1, the ABA programs, the Life Skills Program. So this person will serve all of those students and all the staff that are associated with special education. Thank you, Cynthia.
Do you have a question?
Probably.
It's simple.
Go ahead.
If you're special education, I was just wondering, because I know Tuckahoe doesn't have the Kids Intelligent Program, and sometimes other schools also fall under special education. Is that something that we could possibly consider, a GNT program at Tuckahoe, if all the students are not being met in that aspect?
I think it's possible. It doesn't necessarily have to be with the Special Education Director. Maybe it's something now that we're kind of shifting, maybe Dr. McDonald, and, you know, and our building principals collaborating on that, but definitely, that's something that we need to look at. Also, just some co-curricular stuff that I mentioned earlier, the Student Government Advisor at Cottle, and these are, you know, pretty minimal, but they're important. Those curriculum liaison positions, those are teacher leaders, we will maintain that. And then in the area of athletics, we are just adding some coaches based on student participation rates, which have increased dramatically. A coach for JV Boys Golf in the spring, assistant coach for cheerleading will be added in the fall and winter, and then a weight coach, which is a new program that we piloted this year, using our fitness center, and I believe Coach Sweeney may be doing that this year, and maybe is interested next year. Of course, it has to be posted, but those are something where, in the off-season, there are a lot of students interested in fitness, and fitness is, even if you're not an athlete, it's important, and it's fitness for life. My last slide shows furniture that, right now, is in Ms. Heinsohn's class, where she teaches our U.S. History course at the high school, and you see furniture that is actually very conducive to collaborative learning. So Ms. Liu met with high school staff and Dr. Linehan, and they decided to pilot this furniture. It is a bit costly, you know, school furniture is expensive, but this is a new type of furniture, and the feedback has been very positive. And we would like to continue adding furniture, as I said earlier. So right now, and Ms. Liu will explain where the money will come from, but to refurbish your average classroom, and this is just an estimate, it could be a little bit more or a little less, it costs about $10,000. So that would be, strip a room down, paint it, again, replace maybe some tiles, but if it was more extensive, it could be more costly, and then we believe we could completely add new furniture to a classroom for that estimated cost of $10,000. So what we would like to accomplish next year, we've increased the operation and maintenance budget to have nine classrooms totally refurbished and updated with furniture at Cottle, three classrooms at the middle school, and then three classrooms at the high school. And I think it's important, I may have mentioned it earlier, we did do 11 classrooms this past year. So this is an increase from that, but we'd like to continue, and it could, if there's some money left over at the end, we may be able to go beyond it, but this would be a minimum, and that is all included in the budget. Okay. Now, at this point, if there are any questions for me about goals or something I mentioned, yes?
I noticed in the Cottle presentation, you have one less kindergarten teacher for a class next year. Is that because we're losing a teacher, or there are five more children in their classes result?
Sure, I'm not being rude, I'll just go back to the slide, bear with me.
You had five teachers, five classes this year, four next year, and the classroom size went from 23.
Okay, so, yes, right now, we do have five kindergarten classes. As I said earlier, kindergarten is tricky. So registration is open. Right now, I think, last time I checked with Ms. Pinto, we're somewhere around 74 kids registered. There have been years where 74 only goes to 84. There are years where 74 goes to 100. So it is something, it is never an exact science, so we are tracking it, our younger kids. We definitely would prefer to have small class sizes for the youngest children in the school, and there's research that supports that, particularly at the younger grades. So this is something that has been decided right now, not only based on our projections, but also there are no other classrooms available. If kindergarten were to increase, we may shift this around. We may decide to increase, you know, one of the upper grades, for example. I don't know. Or, and I think most people are reluctant to do this, but it is a possibility, take the library, convert it to a gen ed classroom, and that affects all 600 kids. So that's why we are presenting a bond, of course, because we are out of space, but that is something we'll keep a close eye on, and if, you know, again, if I come back the next presentation, if we see enrollment going up, I may rework those numbers with Mr. Cuglietto and Mr. Kilgallen giving us input, and that could change.
So, okay, so, the class, okay, so it's a fluid number, but it may be that there's a little bit higher class size for kindergarten next year.
And then I think we would seriously consider opening up a fifth section of K, is basically what I'm saying. That's a moving target, and the 92 is just a projection. The actual enrollment, Liu, am I right, 74?
Yes.
Okay, so today, as we speak, 74, and they would comfortably fit in four sections. Now, we do, that always goes up. I don't think that'll hold, but if it goes up by six or eight, I think we'll be okay next year. If it goes up by 28, we have a decision to make. Fair enough? Okay, and we'll keep you informed. Now, I'd like to invite Ms. Liu up.
Yeah, I think this is yours.
Ms. Liu's going to go over all the financials.
So based on the discussions that we had last week, and interactions between myself and the board and Mr. Albano, what I've done between last week and this week is add $150,000 to the expenditure side of the budget, and I'll go into where I place that money, and how we'll be able to pay for that, or how to raise the revenues to pay for that. What I want to start with here is our tax levy calculation that's provided to us by the state. It's a kind of, well, it is a complex formula. We start with last year's tax levy, the money that we ask, overall, our taxpayers, our residents, to raise based on their property values of their homes. We start there, and when the state talks about a 2% tax cap, that's a misnomer. It's a true formula that has various components until we get to our bottom line of what we're allowed to raise in tax levies next year. So we start with the $27,102,400, and the first thing we're allowed to do is increase that by a tax-based growth factor, which we're provided by the Office of the State Controller. That is a brick-and-mortar growth factor based on new construction and improvements to properties in the school district. This year, the Office of the State Controller provided us with a growth factor of 1.33%. So we multiply our prior-year levy by that number, and we come up with our first subtotal, which is the first increase that we're allowed to use. Then there are some things that we add in and take out so that we have a true base to work from. What we do is, we add back the prior-year pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes, that we have some housing in our district that pays that instead of taxes. So we add that to our base, to see what our next subtotal would look like. And then what we do is, we take out what we call prior-year exemptions, which are capital expenditures, debt and lease payments. Those are not part of our tax base, and we can't increase our base based on those numbers. We take that out, and then we multiply by the CPI or 2% that the state talks about, and it's the lesser of the two. This year, for the first time in many years, we get a full 2%, which is the most we can multiply by, and that's because inflation has been over 2%, slightly over. So we multiply our tax, our most recent subtotal by the 2%, we get a new subtotal, we put, we take back out our pilots, and then we are taking our, we get another subtotal, then we add back in our next year's estimate for capital expenditures, leases, debt payments, and the like, and we come up with what we're allowed to raise from the community in taxes. That's one of our main revenue sources. It's actually the largest revenue source. So based on the fact that I've added $150,000 to the budget, and I'll go into this in more detail later, I've added it into our capital line, so it's not increasing the amount that we're asking the taxpayers to raise since our presentation last week. So even though we're allowed to raise our limit by 3.49%, what I've done is kept it to last week's limit, which was 3.12, and I'll show you how that works in a moment. So we are allowed to raise to that level, but we are going to take the increase of $150,000 in a capital line, and it won't increase the amount we ask our taxpayers to pay since last week. The main budget drivers are on both sides of our expenditure and revenue sheets. We start with the expenditure side. We've already added to our budget this year staffing increases, as well as we have some planned increases for next year. So budget-to-budget increases in salaries are going up almost $700,000. Our special education out-of-district tuitions, however, on the expense side, that's the monies that we pay to send students out of district. We are looking at, we brought back several students, and we're looking to decrease that expenditure. That offsets some of the staffing increase expenditures. But we're looking at benefit increases next year, we're looking at increases to the pension costs, we're looking at rate increases in health insurance, and those are additional things that are driving the budget expenditures. In order to pay for some of the things that we're talking about, security increases, furniture, some maintenance and things that we'll need to do before the bond passes, if it does in April, we have two places that we've looked for that to come from. We have an increase in our operations and maintenance expense on the contractual things that we pay for of $175,000 to account for furniture, security increases, and increased maintenance, and things around the district that we will do in advance of the bond. In addition, we are putting in a $100,000 transfer to capital line to do more capital-type improvements, painting, ceiling and floor renovations, exterior site lighting, masonry repairs, upgrades to the fire alarm system, security improvements that we see on an interim basis before we provide for other things in the bond, if that does pass, and other things that we may find in consultation with our security consultant. So I've left that relatively open. We can spend all those monies, or continue to hold them for capital improvements going forward in the district, and if we find we don't need all those monies, although that's unlikely, usually, there's always things we can think of, but depending on the conversations that we have going forward, we can always transfer those monies to a capital reserve for other improvements that we might like to see in the district down the road. On the revenue side, I'm recommending that we stay at the 3.12% tax levy increase that we discussed last week, which would give us an increase of $846,000. Although we could go up to 946, that extra $100,000 that I'm adding to transfer to capital, I recommend we take that out of our fund balance and not use that from additional tax levies. I'm also, on the revenue side, anticipating that we will see increases to our budget in tuition revenues. We try to be very conservative how we budget tuition revenues, because if one or two students decide not to attend the district, then we would have a shortfall in revenues. So we carefully look at who's coming back, but we always have to be conservative in the event that someone moves, or someone changes their plans and doesn't come to the district, and that's why that number, but I do believe, based on the conversations that we've had around the district, that that number can be increased to provide more revenues to the revenue side of the budget. And then, at the moment in time, at this moment in time, based only on the governor's proposal, we're looking at $77,000 in state aid increase. We are waiting to see what the Assembly and the Senate comes back with in their proposals for state aid. There have been some proposals that the governor has put into place that already are being rejected by the Assembly's proposal. For example, the governor decided to put into his recommendation the summer school programs, the special ed summer school programs, that typically, the state provides us with 80% of the cost. The governor proposed to bring that down to the individual district's wealth ratio to pay, based on the wealth ratio of the district, which would have brought our state aid down to 25% approximately, instead of the 80%. But from everything we're hearing, we don't expect that to go through, so I haven't increased the budget for that amount. The Assembly has already said no to that proposal, and they're working very hard to change that, and it's most likely that that won't come into play, but we are watching that carefully, and we'll let you know if we see anything new before April 1st, when the final budgets are supposed to be out.
Someone in?
I'm sorry, operations and maintenance. Sorry.
Is security included in that?
It is, yes.
What's the breakdown of the, 175 is a big number relative to some of the others. Is there, is there anything specific in O and M that?
We have the new security consultant cost in there, we have monies set aside if we decide to increase staffing in any ways to cover security costs. Right now, it's a number that is just a placeholder. As we talk more in the next week or two, hopefully, we'll have more straightened out, but we did want to put that into place based on some estimates that we have for some security. So if we are looking at a 3.12 tax levy increase, where does that leave our budget? All the expenditures that we have taken a look at in a rollover budget, our contractual obligations, and our thoughts about the increases in program maintenance, when we take a look at where they come out to next year, we're at $33,983,550. When we add up all our revenues on the revenue side of the budget, including state aid, tax levies, we get some interest income, and I'll go into more detail in another slide or two, we're coming up with $32,583,968. So as you can see, there's a gap between those two lines, and the budget gap is $1,399,582. So how should we close that budget gap? By law, we're not allowed to have a budget gap, we have to have a balanced budget. One thing that may occur is, there may be additional state aid, and we'll find out before April 1st if that's the case. Often, the state legislature does provide more than the governor's original budget. Also, we can use appropriated fund balance. Our fund balance is the district's savings account. If there is an excess of revenues over expenses each year, that would be something that we can place into our fund balance over time, and we can use some of those monies to offset the budget gap. So at this point in time, I'm proposing that we take the full amount of the gap and use fund balance to fund it. That is an increase from last year's appropriation and the year before, and I will go in a future slide, right, in a slide or two, I'll show you how our fund balance is looking at this point in time. It does appear that we will be able to utilize fund balance to balance the budget, as well as not to hit too heavily into our reserves. So this is the slide that has been presented the last few years. The yellow shaded areas are our estimates of what we have going forward, and as you can see, the center column, and if you can't see it, I apologize, but it will be on the website tomorrow, and you can look at it more closely, but the center column is the difference between our revenues and our expenditures in each year, and that provides us with what we call a surplus, and as you can see, we, last few years, we've had quite a big surplus, but each of the last few years, we've also been cutting back the budget significantly while adding programs and staff. So this year, I'm anticipating only about a $225,000 surplus, and that's because we've had, just in the last week or two, some more tax surgiaries that have come, and you'll see them on the agenda tonight, that have come due that we need to pay, and that would only add, so that would add to our surplus slightly. And if you go to the next slide, now, I know this is hard to read, so I apologize, but the bottom line shows what our fund balance has been over the years. As you can see, the first column, our fund balance was $3,100,000, and each year, the district has been conservative and has added to its fund balance until we now have $6,700,000. But if you look at each line leading up to our ending fund balance, you'll see that many, much of that, many of those funds... many, much of that, many of those funds are earmarked to restricted reserves. So the first line is our tax sociariary reserve. And what we have right now is we've built that tax sociariary reserve up to a level that our auditors consider prudent, $3.6 million, because we have outstanding in the district a potential of $16 million of tax certs. So we'd like to have a big savings account to pay those so that we don't have to go to the market and borrow to pay for those. That's probably in the best interests of the district to have a healthy reserve for tax sociaries, considering the size of the tax sociaries we typically see here. We also have some smaller reserves that are restricted to future benefits for employees who retire, also for our pension fund payments. If they should change radically from year to year, we have a small retirement fund reserve so that we can cover those big fluctuations in payments. And the last line is just a reserve for encumbrances, which is just payables that we have each year that we have to reserve for, that carry over to the next year. The final piece of that puzzle is, we are allowed a 4%?
Someone had a question.
Oh.
A question, person, for reference to the tax sociarity, you have a fund balance of the $3,000,000 or $3.6. Do you anticipate that somewhere out there, that there is a $16 million?
We have, we don't just anticipate, we already have petitions.
You have petitions?
Petitions in hand.
That equal $16?
$16 million, right. Now, they don't always settle at $16 million. So we funded about three, a little less than 25% of our potential liability, but it's prudent to make sure that we're able to fund those, and then if we have surpluses going forward, to reestablish those amounts.
The petition could be more unfiled?
Every year, we get them. Every year, they come in. So when we settle them, new ones come in each year. And these are generally, these, that we're talking about are typically from large multifamily buildings or commercial properties. It's not the small residential homes that are creating that liability. The third to bottom line is our unassigned fund balance, and that's really the district's savings account. By law, we're allowed to have 4% of our budget in that line, and that's what we have maintained over the years. And that's for emergencies or one-time expenditures that may come up, that we have to fund during a school year, or any kind of special thing that may arise that we haven't particularly budgeted for, but the board may have to fund. And then finally, the last line is the amount that we've reserved to reduce taxes with our appropriations. So as you can see, or if you can't see, you'll see tomorrow, the $1,399,582 projected for next year is the amount we are suggesting that we assign to reduce taxes and fund the remainder of our budget, so that we'll have a balanced budget. So again, what we still don't know for next year, as we prepare this budget, is what type of tax sociariary petitions and judgments may come up. We don't know yet our final state aid numbers. We also are waiting to get exact staffing levels that will be required to meet any new mandates or current mandates, as well as the needs of our special education students that typically come up during the year that we are mandated by law to take care of, and anything else that arises. Just to review again, tax sociaries, our reserve is $3.9 million as of last June. We have a potential liability of $16,219,516, and that's filed petitions, as I just explained. We appropriate in our budget $30,000 each year for refunds. Right now, this year, we're over $200,000 in refunds that we've had to provide. So our tax sociariary reserve does provide the monies to pay for those without having to go out and borrow. But I should note, and the state, New York State, has also required that we say that refunds may be paid out of the tax sociariary reserve, but if, for example, they were so large that we could not, I do want to state that it's possible we could bond for them, depending on the number and amount of judgments that come in in a given year, and every year it varies. We never know what will settle and what will, we will be required to pay out, and what new ones come in. The next page on the document that you can see in larger scale tomorrow morning, when you look at it on the website, is just a breakdown in categories of our revenues over the last three years. We show the actual revenues and going back to 2016, '17, and then our proposed budget at 2018, '19. And as you can see, our grand total for our revenues is $33,098,350. That's a budget-to-budget increase of $1,480,651. And as you can see, we are anticipating that 3.12% increase in our tax levy to raise We'll raise a little more in revenues, as we discussed earlier, and then there's some, the appropriated fund balance would make up the remainder. That's how it looks graphically. The largest chunk of that pie is our real property taxes, including STAR. That's about 82%. Then we get our total state aid is typically around 9%, and then each other, small revenue slices of that pie from other sources like charges for services, pilots, which are payments in lieu of taxes from various places, and the appropriated fund balance. On the expenditure side, again, the budget balances, if we utilize appropriated fund balance, at $33,098,350, the same budget to, the same expenditure line as the revenue side. And as you can see, general support has increased 223,000. Instruction, which includes teacher salaries, as well as supplies and other things provided for by instruction, is, has increased 762,000, primarily due to staffing increases. Our pupil transportation, we're anticipating a slight decline. Our employee benefits have gone up quite a bit this year. We're anticipating for next year, actually I meant, and that's about 488,000. Our debt service, as we've talked about in our bond presentations, is starting to go down, and that's where we're seeing that first evidence of it actually next year, a very small amount. $77,000 is slightly lower debt, that we're paying principal and interest costs. And then finally, the interfund transfers, which is where you'll see the transfer to capital. We always have the $60,000 transfer to cap, transfer interfund for our summer program, and then I've added another 100,000 for transfer to capital. Graphically, if you look at our large pieces, total instruction of 56,000, and then add in that second to largest piece, which is total employee benefits of 21,000, and you can see that the bulk of a school district's expenses are personnel. 77,000, 77% is our personnel cost, followed by general support, which is 11%. Debt service, about 6%, and transportation, 5%. A five-year history of our tax levy is the first column. You can see that our 2014, '15 through 2018, '19, on average, our five-year average of our tax levy has increased 1.48%. On our budget side, budget-to-budget, you can see the five-year average is 1.97%. So even with the various fluctuations year to year, overall, we are staying under that 2% target. Some important dates to remember, we will have another budget review on April 9th. We will have, although I believe that's changed to April 10th now, but we'll check that date, and we'll correct it before the morning. Well, the board will adopt a budget on April 17th. On May 5th, we have a public hearing on the adopted budget, and then Tuesday, May 15th, is our annual budget vote and trustee election. So the election is from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM for the budget, as well as one Board of Education seat. And then there are now only two election districts, I want to remind everyone. So please take a look to make sure you know where your election district is, and for May 15th. And then finally, there's one more thing I would like to mention while I'm here, and that's on transportation, before I take questions on the budget. We just want to remind people that if you are filing requests for transportation to a non-public or parochial school, your transportation application request is due April 1st. That's a Sunday this year, so we, the district will accept applications until Monday, April 2nd, but any requests received after April 2nd cannot be honored. Please call the business office to make sure that your application has been received, and if you fax in the request, please save the confirmation printout. And if you email it in, your email record will provide the date sent. And I also want to mention, the next Budget Advisory Committee meeting will meet on next Thursday, March 28th, at 7:00 o'clock here in the library. That's a committee that we meet with regularly to discuss the budget and the new, any questions that may arise? Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lee.
Sure.
Did you want to take questions from there?
So the board, I guess if he wants to refer to the screen, we'll wait here.
Okay. Okay. Did anyone have any questions?
No.
Go ahead, Amy.
I got one, a quick one. Last week, I mentioned it, we have, and they're on their agenda tonight, a couple hundred thousand in tax search that we'll have to pay on. I don't know, I forget what we mentioned last week. Is it possible we could use the reserve as opposed to having it flow through the budget?
We do use the reserve, because we only have a $30,000 allocation line in the budget. So anything, and we're already over that for the year, so we will fund it out of the reserve. So that will show up at the end of the year when we finish our year.
Okay.
Okay, I had a couple of things. One is, I just wanted to highlight that for the classroom refurbishing, last week, there were eight classrooms, four in Cottle, two in the middle school, and two in the high school. And this week, I'm happy to see that there are nine in Cottle, three in the middle school, and three in the high school. Which line is that coming from? Because I'm a little confused between the capital line and the O&M line.
It's coming from two lines. The actual renovations and refurbishments, that'll come from the capital line. So if we have to do any ceiling tile replacement, floor replacements, painting, we'll do that in the capital line. And so I've moved things between the two lines. The furniture will come from a contractual line in the operations and maintenance budget. So we have the monies in the two lines.
Okay, and then for the security enhancements, what line does that come from?
If it's a capital improvement, it will come from the capital line, but we also have money in the contractual line. So we can move the monies between if we need to, to make sure that we can fund what we need, but between the two lines, we think we have allocated the monies that you've been talking about.
Okay, so, so what is the specific increase for security, safety and security, and what's the specific increase for the classrooms?
So we've increased the contractual line in operations and maintenance by $81,000, and we've increased materials and supplies by $40,000. And then we've increased the transfer to capital line by $100,000. So between those three increases, we anticipate that if not in those particular lines, we can move them to lines where the board decides to spend the money, should it be personnel versus renovations, and that should be what we consider to be what would be needed for security consultants, renovations, furniture upgrades, and renovations and improvements.
And there was also additional funding for a monitor, security monitor as well, right?
Right.
That was new from, from last budget.
Right. And if we need to, we can probably, there is, there is room in the salaries and benefits lines, but we also have some additional monies, just contractual, because it may not be a specific employee. It could be a consultant or something else that we use in that line. So we can move the monies from line to line, depending on, right now, it's, we're waiting to get Al Taras and give us recommendations of what specifically to do, but we can move the monies.
So right now, I'm sorry, is the recommendation for one security monitor, is that?
Well, at this point in time, we don't have a specific recommendation at all, so.
Well, no, I think it said here, it said, it said high school, like, one for the high school, is that?
You added one, but I think it's a place.
Well, right, right. There's a placeholder for that, right.
For one.
Right. But there's, there's allocations available if we decide to move money from one, from the contractual line to a monitor line, as opposed to hiring somebody outside to help in that regard.
I, you know, I'm just gonna say that I would like to see two, two security monitors. That's my request when I look at the budget, and I think it's a great budget, and I think we've done, you know, you've done a really great job, and I think you've really listened to a lot of the things that we, as a board, have asked for, things that have come to us from the community. I do understand that we have a consultant. I was very impressed with his presentation, and I do agree that, of course, we want to listen to the recommendations of an expert, but I also think, from what I sense from our community, that they would like to see a presence. So whether the consultant comes back with that or not, I see the importance of actually having additional security monitors in place. And what the, you know, even the consultant may ask for a specific criteria for, you know, the type of, of requirements that they should have, and their background, and that's a different conversation. But I would rather see a line that creates two positions and still keep the other things in place for other things that we might need. And I don't know how creatively you would have to do something like that to get that done, but that would be my, my ask.
So would, are you suggesting that you want me to reduce a line somewhere else, or would you prefer to see that?
If that's how you have to do it, yeah.
Or we could appropriate additional monies and increase the appropriation as well? There's two ways we can go about doing that. We can talk to the Budget Advisory Committee next week and see if they might want to make a recommendation along those lines, if you'd like, and then we can present to you the next board meeting.
Sure, that would be good.
What was the cost that you had allocated for the one additional monitor?
A full-time monitor would be about $35,000.
Yeah, I think we all had expressed that, that was something that we'd like to see.
Okay. Mike?
Yeah?
Do you want to come forward? Because I'm sorry, people at home can't hear you.
Sure.
Mike Denning, 72 Stubbs, two questions. On the revenue side, state aid is about 9% of our budget, and what does that compare to other districts? What do they get state aid-wise? Is it 9%, 10% of their budget, or more or less? And second question is, you said also on the revenue side, the STAR program. So I know my taxes show a STAR reduction, where I know in the past, I've gotten a STAR refund. So in other words, a STAR revenue is, instead of me getting a STAR check, that check is sent to the school to offset my STAR reduction?
Right.
Right? Sorry.
In terms of the state aid, we're pretty typical for Westchester. Everybody in Westchester County typically gets between 8% and 10%. We don't get very much state aid. Upstate New York, you may see districts that get 90, 95% of their revenues come from state aid. So we are very typical for this area. In terms of the tax levy, the state sends you, my understanding is the state sends a check or you get a credit. It depends on how it's structured and when you moved into your home, but the tax levy is what we levy entirely, and then the state works around that to provide us with the, we get the full amount of the revenues that we're showing, and then everyone gets their STAR rebates, either as a credit or as a check.
Right, you're showing it on the revenue side.
Right, because.
STAR is a revenue, so that would be my credit, is the revenue.
Right, exactly, and then the state makes us whole on the other side.
Okay. Does anyone else have a question regarding the budget? Anyone on the board have a question for Lee or Carl? No?
Good.
Okay, so since we're, budget presentation, and again, we will have the next presentation on the April 10th meeting.
Right.
That's correct, okay.
And if I could just add, Michelle, April 10th is a date change. Originally, that meeting was scheduled April 9th, but of course, we have our bond on April 10th, therefore, it was more efficient just to move the board meeting, and we'll hold the board meeting that evening.
Okay. All right, and now, first recognition of the audience, and that's for anything on the agenda. If anyone has any comments or questions about the agenda, anything? No? Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, to, motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dash, discussion, does anyone have anything on the consent agenda that they'd like to pull out, discuss? Does anyone have anything on the consent agenda that they'd like to pull out, discuss, comment on?
You know, I think it's worth mentioning, we typically do coaching staff in the consent agenda. However, there was a change. We are rescinding Mr. Joseph Tolls, who originally was appointed as a tennis coach. Only a few students expressed interest in tennis. However, surprisingly, about 23 or 24 students have expressed interest in track, in running spring track. Now, we don't have a track here at Tocco. However, Bronxville has been very welcoming in the past, and has allowed, through a merger, Toccoho students to compete, along with the Bronxville track team. In the past, typically, we would send maybe two or three students, student athletes, I should say. But this year, in sending 23 or 24 students, we think it would be appropriate for us to also send a coach. So, Mr. Joseph Tolls does have a strong background in track, in field, and it is the recommendation of Mr. Goldberg that we go ahead and rescind his tennis appointment, and then reappoint him as a track coach for the spring.
Okay, thank you, Paul. All in favor? All right, now, we'll move on to business of the board. Number one, approved committee members. Resolve to approve the following members of the district-wide school safety committee. East Chester Town Supervisor Anthony Colavita, Toccoho Mayor Steve Eklund, East Chester Fire Chief Brian Tween, Toccoho Police Chief John Costanza, East Chester Police Chief Timothy Bonsi, East Chester Police Lieutenant Jeffrey Hunter, Board of Education Trustee Peter Cassin, Toccoho PTA President Allison Halloran, Toccoho Union Free School Director of Finance and Facilities Lilo. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
Yeah, just real quick, is there a reason why we're not including some members of the community on this board?
Yeah, I had the same question.
This, this can grow. I mean, we can add people. This is a starting point, you know, at first, and there are other, as John Laplaca talked about, there are other levels of safety committees here in the district. This one, I think, you know, this includes key decision-makers. So, you have your leaders from the police department, your leaders from the town and the village, and the idea is to basically get everyone together who has the ability to make change and to keep this conversation moving forward and work together. So, that is the motivation behind it. Certainly, we can add names, and I think that's something that we probably will do, but we wanted to get started tonight officially.
Were you looking at this as a way to also cover what used to be the threat assessment meetings that happened in the district a while back, or no?
Peter, I don't see this, this group of individuals drilling down that deeply on, you know, specific school procedures and things like that. No, I see this more as, again, key decision-makers in our community. We had some questions for the police department here this evening. I think, you know, having everyone at the table, including the fire department, too.
Right.
A key part of safety, I think it'd be very valuable.
Yeah, I'd definitely like to see it grow, to add a couple of members from the community, just to get some voices, and particularly, maybe folks in the community that have emergency service jobs, who are professionals in that area. It could be police, it could be fire, EMS, whatever. I think it'd be good to expand it out to that, so...
But, you know, I would say, then, I think if someone is interested, particularly someone with either law enforcement or emergency work background, they should probably just, you know, write to the Board of Education, maybe address it to Ms. Licio, and it will be considered, sure.
Well, because in the other committees, we have a certain amount of slots open? Is that how we do it normally? Or no?
We usually don't.
No?
You know, but there is a point where, where a committee grows to such a number where it can become ineffective. So, I think, you know, if you have an interest, I would say, you know, write a formal request to be a part of this, and certainly, we'll give it consideration.
I wonder if it would be helpful to have a better description of what that responsibility or role would be, because then someone may or may not be interested based on...
And I believe John said he was going to give us that structure.
Yeah, because that would be helpful.
And if there are going to be committees within the schools, then that might also be a place where parents would be more interested in serving, and then those committees would make recommendations to the district-wide committee. So, if you're a parent, perhaps in Cottle or in the middle school, and you see certain things, and, or if you have the background and you have input that you'd like to put there, that also might be a good place to do that. So, maybe we should see what John says about the structure and the difference between the district-wide school committee and then the building committees.
Okay, this is not final, this is a starting point.
Right.
It's a starting, absolutely.
Okay, all in favor? Number two, approve a stipulation of settlement resolved at the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District hereby approves the stipulation of settlement dated March 19th, 2018, bind between the district and the Toccoho Teachers Association, and authorize the superintendent to execute the same. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Dodge, discussion? All in favor? Okay, number three, this is an item that was added. Resolution to approve Second Amendment agreement with Kier, Garment, and Davidson Architects. That's what we refer to as KGND Architects. Where, it's a little lengthy, whereas the Toccoho Union Free School District, and I'm going to say KGND Architects PC, entered into an architect agreement for pre-bond planning dated March 31st, 2017, which was amended by the First Amendment standard form of agreement between owner and architect signed by the school district on May 8th, 2017. Whereas, Toccoho Union Free School District receive a proposal dated December 12th, 2017 from KGND Architects PC to assist the school district with examining alternatives for reconfiguring current facilities to provide additional instructional space for its kindergarten to fifth-grade students. Two, relocating the district's offices. Three, exploring feasibility of emergency performance contract for certain infrastructure work. Four, analyzing the conditions of the existing synthetic turf. And five, developing budgets for these proposed actions. And whereon, December 18th, 2017, the Board of Education of Toccoho Union Free School District approved entering to an agreement with KGND Architects PC to provide the above described services as more fully described in the December 12th, 2017 proposal received by KGND Architects PC for sum not to exceed $27,500. And whereas, after such approval, the Board of Education decided to also explore the possibility of proposing a new capital project bond, having a reduced scope, and KGND Architects PC agreed to hold these services to the scope of work proposed in its December 12th, 2017 letter at no additional cost, which is memorialized in a letter to the school district dated March 2nd, 2018. And whereas KGND Architects PC has also proposed to complete the schematic design for the proposed addition to the Cottle Elementary School by April 10th, 2018 for a fixed fee of $50,228. And whereas, a Second Amendment of the standard form of agreement between the owner and architect has been proposed to amend the school district's agreement with KGND Architects PC as amended by the First Amendment to provide, one, the above described planning services described in its December 12th, 2017 services, and the services to prepare a reduced scope capital project for voter consideration for a sum not to exceed $20,500. And two, to complete the schematic design of the Cottle School Project for a fixed fee of $50,228. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District approves and ratifies the Second Amendment of the standard form of agreement between owner and architect, which amends the school district's agreement with KGND Architects PC dated March 31st, 2017, as amended by the First Amendment to provide the above described services for a sum not to exceed $77,728. And be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the Toccoho Union Free School District authorize and empowers the President of the Board of Education to execute the above described Second Amendment of the standard form of agreement between owner and architect on behalf of the school district, and authorize and empowers the President of the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools to take all other actions necessary to implement the purposes of this resolution. Is there a motion? Pete, second. Rob, discussion?
Yeah, can, I think that has to be explained in some, in English.
I know, there's a lot of...
There's a lot of stuff in there.
Yes.
Okay. I will begin, and then I'll look towards Lee to complete this explanation. So, this very long resolution basically allows us to compensate KGND Architects for work they did on a contingency plan. So, when the budget was defeated back in December, immediately afterwards, we started to explore what are the options left. We have overcrowding, we have infrastructure, we have safety issues. What can we do? So, the board approved for us to work with KGND on developing contingency plans. They did things like research modular classrooms and how much that would cost, and legally, where could we place them if we did decide to do that? And that's just one example. So, this resolution allows us to pay them an hourly rate for that work, and they will itemize what they did for us. They didn't continue with that work because somewhere around January, the board started to consider going out with a scaled-back version of the original capital project plan. So, KGND basically stopped contingency planning, and we shifted our focus to a scaled-back version of the plan, which is the one that is being presented to the public on April 10th. And to make sure that we keep things moving along, and to hopefully hit that start date, if the plan is approved, of the summer of 2019, we have them beginning on a schematic design. So, that's the first step of the architect's work. We're basically compensating them, and that is roughly, Lee, about 30, 36...
Well, it's the $50,228 that Michelle referenced, minus their original fee, which is a credit against that.
Okay. Roughly 36 or 37,000?
After the credit.
Well, where's, where's the credit?
It's referenced to the original agreement. That Stephanie referenced that in the resolution. It references the original agreement that was signed in March 2017.
Right, that's how, that's what, how I thought it was, but instead of a credit, it combined the two together, and it says to provide above services for a sum not to exceed $77,728. That's...
Well, 77,728 are the two pieces. So, it's the $50,228 plus the 27,5 for the other contingency part. It's two different amendments combined into one, for a total of $77,728. It's two pieces. The first piece is the work, and they're still actually doing a small portion of that original work for the energy performance contract, as well as the turf field evaluations. That was the 27,5, and then the $50,228, that's the work on the schematic design, of which we'll receive a credit from the original contract.
But the credit's not mentioned in there?
Yeah.
It's referenced to the original contract, where it's mentioned in the original contract. Stephanie wrote it up to reference the original contract. Stephanie Burns, our attorney.
And again, we're allowing them to begin work early. We don't know the outcome of the bond vote. But our hope is that we are able to begin construction in the summer of 2019. There is no guarantee. And then, worst-case scenario, if the bond, you know, were not approved, then we would own schematic designs for this expenditure. But of course, the intent is that we have every advantage to make sure, or to try to make sure that construction begins summer 2018.
Thank you.
Summer of 2019. Excuse me. Thank you.
So, is that clear to you what the credit is?
No, no, it's, it's okay with me, because it, I'm going to make sure it's okay before I sign it. So, for me, I'm okay.
Yeah, well, you have final authorization is needed before you can...
I don't want to hold up anything with the architect. They're going forward, and we don't want anything on our part that we've in any way have delayed what is our motivation, which is to start the summer of 2019. So, I have confidence that I, that we can sort these numbers out, and again, if the agreement's not signed until we, we're all sure that those are the right numbers. So, if you guys are okay with me saying that, then I'm good. All in favor? Okay, personnel. Number one, appoint a coach. Resolve to appoint Joseph Tools as track coach for the 2018 spring season at a stipend of $6,234. Motion? Cynthia, second. Pete, discussion? All in favor? And, oh, did we did? No, we did the stipulation.
We did.
Two, personnel. And that's it? Okay, second recognition of the audience. Did anyone have anything to add? Allison?
I just want to say one thing in reference to Peter's comments with the safety committee. As far as parents wanting to have input and wanting to be on the committee, that really is part of the reason I viewed as me being on the committee, was that they can certainly always email me, reach out to me, and it's my job to bring to the committee the view of the parents and what we want. That's kind of my responsibility of it, as well as yours, not, you know, you are also a parent. So, you know, it's kind of us together to say, you know, this is what, this is what parents feel. So, I don't want anyone to feel like if we don't expand it, that they don't have a voice, because they absolutely do, and they have it through me.
Thank you, Allison, for that. Okay, and then, we are not going to adjourn the meeting, because we are going to go back into executive session, but I just, again, we just briefly discussed it again, but I just want one more reminder, this is our last public meeting before the vote, April 10th. The week prior, we will be on school recess. So, all we can do to get that, the word out, and again, to please remind everybody, Lee did mention it, that there are two voting locations now, that those residents that used to vote in Chester Heights will now vote at Cottle School. Everyone who used to vote at Cottle School still votes at Cottle School with the addition of the residents from Chester Heights, and then, of course, at the Community Center for those residents who have in the past voted at the Community Center. Anyone who has any questions, please, about the capital project? Any concerns? The mailer did go out, I did bring it this evening. I did receive mine in the mail. Anyone who has received it and has any questions, to please reach out. We'd like to clarify anything, any concerns, any open questions anybody has about the project, so that everyone can please make an educated vote and educated decision. And that's it. Thank you. Oh, Mike had something to say? Go ahead.
Just a quick question. Sorry. Thank you all for volunteering in the late hour. I stepped out of the room. Tax societies that were settled for 50 Columbus and...
Yes.
...Kiln, what were the tax years for those?
I'll have to go look. I don't have it.
Okay. Maybe in the future, we add that in for tax years, because somebody's, I know, they're getting back $145,000, say.
Five years back, but I'll check.
But it could be five years from 2009 to 2014, right? And it's, they're still going to go from there forward again. And second, in reference to that, the Tower Club, it's my understanding, isn't the Tower Club condominium?
Condominium, yes.
So, this was filed on behalf of all residents within the condominium as a group?
Yes.
Not individually?
Correct. Condominiums are valued as a business, as opposed to residential. So, it's a different valuation.
Right, and co-ops is different as well. Okay, all right, thank you. Thanks again.
Thanks, Mike.